Go ahead, Kevin.
Hey, everyone. I'd like to call the February 22, 2021, meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and zoning commission to order. Mr. Henry, do please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Present.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin. Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
President, and I just got a text from Mr. McPartlin. Laura, could you send him the meeting link again? Apparently he had a problem. By the time I find the email in his, we can get started while you're doing that, okay? All right, so Mr. McPartlin will join us as soon as he gets the link. And first up, we can start, though, is with the approval of the minutes from the January 25, 2021, meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion made by Mr. Oster. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Mr. Darpino. Thank you. Comments, changes? I have one, but I'll wait to see if anybody else has anything else. Let's see anything. Okay, I do have one addition to the minutes. And that would be right somewhere around line 116, which is right at the top of page four. That's the I-Fix Pro. That's the store that tenant changed that we approved on the 25th. We need to add, a motion was made by Chairman Walsh for approval of the resolution, and it was seconded by Mr. Oster. That was missing from the minutes. Is there anybody okay with that addition? Anybody opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, well, minutes are modified, just by adding the, you know, who motioned and seconded the resolution. Any other corrections or changes for the minutes from the January 25, 2021, meeting? Okay, seeing none, are those in favor of approval of the January 25, 2021, meeting minutes as modified, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, seeing no one opposed, I will accept the minutes as slightly modified from January 25. Thank you. We have a quick agenda. It looks like tonight, we have no public hearings. And privilege of the floor, Laura, have you received any emails, or do we have anybody online?
Um, no, I haven't received any emails, and Joel did just join, but I think he's here for agenda item. And Patrick also isn't here now.
Yep, yep, yeah, thank you, Patrick. Sorry about that. There we go, everybody. All right, no privilege of the floor, and we have no unfinished business or new business tonight. So that's going to bring us right to our only discussion item tonight, which is 2538 River Road, Kelts Farm subdivision. And I know we have the applicant online. I don't know if he's on phone. Joel, are you there?
I'm here, Kevin.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure we got you. Okay, we got you on the phone, and we have Mr. Darpino and Mr. McPartlin apologetic lead. So if anybody wants to start, I'm glad to let you jump in.
I can, I can lead off.
Okay, great.
Okay. So this past week, Joel reached out to the planning department, and he wanted to get started on the, some tree clearing, and had some demarcation drawings made up. He also has been working with his engineer to update his drawings, which were included into the packet. And Mr. Henry put together four action items that we'll talk about tonight. First one is to complete the open space forever wild designation with deed restrictions. The SWIPs has to be formally submitted to the town, the TDE letter with the review of the SWIPs. And then the other thing was to schedule a site walk with the tree council, so that we could review the tree clearing drawing that Joel has put together for the first pass.
Yep. Thank you, David. And I guess, do we have, for the, as far as the legal goes, do we have everything that we need, Laura, from the applicant for that open item? Or Mr. Briggs?
Um, I don't think actually Joel submitted anything for that. So Joel probably would need to do at least, at a minimum, the legal description of the area to be deeded to the Town and Niskiuna. And with that legal description, you know, Paul Briggs and I can work on the language that we want in the deed restriction. And I know we do have some help that we can get on that from a couple people who are interested in helping us on that. So I think that we, and Paul can jump in, I think we can, but we do need the legal description.
All right, well, Joel, and Mr. McPartlin doesn't have anything. Joel, we got you online there. So what's the status of the SWIP? Is that being worked on your engineering now?
Yeah, the SWIP, I think I might have told you guys last time, but Nick Costa was actually in the hospital, ICU for two weeks, COVID. So he should have the SWIP done any day now. We did submit the engineering without the SWIP for the TDE. And the deed description, yeah, I guess I owe that. I was getting kind of confused, because I think we submitted the deed description for the Overlook Park. So I'll get the Kelts Farm deed description in order. And the site walk with the tree council. I thought I did that a bunch of times, Laura.
Okay, Joel, go ahead.
Oh, I said, I think Laura was trying to speak. I said, I thought, I thought that we did a tree council walk a bunch of times, Laura, on Kelts Farm.
Yeah, I think the tree council has looked at that, even specifically the trees that, that they wanted to keep, like, deciding them multi-use path and stuff like that. And I think both the tree and the conservation advisory council are pretty happy with the way it's turning out, and want to work on developing the landscaping and, you know, the wildflowers and stuff along the multi-use path. Specifically, like, the town has got some biodiversity initiatives that are going on. And so they want to, you know, plant some trees along the multi-use path, and then also do some, like, loop and protection, and some other, like, wildflowers, so they can make pollinator pathways, and then have, like, little signs as you go along the multi-use path. Because it's high visibility, it'll look really nice, and it's a good way to educate people about those kind of things. But yeah, they've been out there a lot. So I think just keeping the landscaping and the sort of construction of it in mind, and making sure that they're involved in those things is probably good. But we can, we can send the tree clearing plan to them and make sure that it's in harmony with everything that they've seen so far.
Yeah, and what, what we've done, Laura, too, is that my engineer estimated that there's 4.7 acres of tree clearing. Okay, and what we're going to do, too, is I'm not going to grade the area where the houses go. You know, and that'll be great for transplanting the flowers, too, because, you know, in the spring, we'll, we'll see that the flowers are growing, and then we can transplant those flowers into that Windsor Drive stub road area, too. You know, I was considering bringing in all the fill and bringing the lots up to, you know, the final grade, but I decided, well, I'll do that as I build the houses, and that way we can protect the planting better. So we won't, we won't disturb, you know, we're only going to disturb the areas where the roads go at first.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
And, and what we had planned to do, too, is once we, once we state the, the tree clearing boundaries, then, you know, we'll walk it with the tree council again and make sure that, you know, if those, if those big trees that we wanted to save by zigzagging the bike path through that area, if they're in the tree clearing area, you know, we'll specifically mark those not to be cut then, all right?
That sounds good. With the boundaries marked, I think that's the perfect time for the tree council just to look and make sure that they make sense, and then there isn't a big tree right on the line that can be saved or something like that.
And one, one other thing, too, in going through, you know, the, the quote, you know, with the roadway companies, okay? I really want the planning board to look again at the size, the width of the path, you know, from the top of Kelts Farm Drive down to River Road. You know, my thoughts are that, you know, it's 12 foot wide, which is extremely wide in my, my view, you know? But, you know, for the, for the emergency trucks, okay? But, you know, we are connecting it to the top of the loop. And, you know, people, they, at a minimum, on bikes, will probably dump off into the roadway. But I went this weekend to the, the path at the train station, which is, you know, probably the busiest section of the path. You know, and that path's only eight foot wide. You know, my thoughts are that, you know, we got a path that's 12 foot wide, you know, it's 50% wider. And that's going to be on people's front lawns. It's going to look really weird to have it 12 foot wide. It's going to look like a road. It's going to look like a road next to a road. And I'd like to see if the plan, where we've considered knocking it down, down to at least 10, if not 8.
Joel, you're talking about the, just along the Kelts Farm Drive, along the homes, not the connection portion, is that correct?
That's correct, because, I mean, if you look, you know, you look now going up Windsor, you know, it's eight foot wide in front of the people's houses. And imagine if that's 12 feet wide. I mean, what that's going to look like. Not going to look pretty.
The plan has it at 10, Joel.
I thought we increased it, we had to increase it to 12. It has it at 10?
Well, it, it changes from 12 to 10 when it meets up with Kelts Farm Road.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, then, I don't know my own plan. That's not a good thing.
Yeah, I know, I know we had the discussion before a couple times, so, but.
All right.
We can, you know.
10, 10's a little excessive, but I can live with 10.
All right.
Yeah, Joel, I wouldn't be opposed to it going to eight feet there if it widened the tree strip or the grass strip between the road and the, and the asphalt.
I would really appreciate that, you know what I mean? Because, you know, like I said, I went, I specifically went to the bike path, you know, and measured it, and looked at how many people were using it, and it was pretty much, you know, that parking lot was full. And no one's running into anybody, or, you know, or you really don't need a 10-foot wide path.
Yeah, it's 10 foot along, along River Road. So if you made that reduction within Kelts Farm Road only, down to eight feet, that could be eased down. I think that that's, that's, that's pretty reasonable for that, for that small section.
But Dave, you're saying leave it 10 foot along river, right? And then where it bends up the loop, go to eight, and then from the top of the loop to Windsor, it's 12?
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you could. I would definitely keep it 12 for the Windsor connection.
Yep.
And then, and then take a look at, take a look at how it would scale out if you wanted, because it is a good observation. You've got, you've got the road there, and you've got a very, very narrow grass strip with, with the bike path right next to it. So if you can harmonize that a little bit better, because that.
So we'll, we'll, we'll take that two foot and add it to the grass strip then, okay?
Yeah. And then, the only other thing is, is that if, if these are the engineering drawings, I know all the plans are reoriented 180 degrees. We've been used to seeing them with Windsor Drive up at the top of the page. Whatever, whatever the final sets of drawings are going to be, just make sure everything's consistently oriented.
Okay.
Because this is the first set of plans I think we've seen where River Road's at the top of the drawing.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. All right.
Joel, have you had any other discussions with the planning department about the 25-foot buffer to the wetland boundary?
No, my favorite topic, I try not to. But, uh.
Well, I want you to know, the issue came up with the recent subdivision over on Balltown Road, the Amador 66 unit subdivision.
Yeah, you know, I, I did all my research this weekend. I went over to Harmon Grove, too, and I checked that out, you know, and, call me a liar, I'll, I'll, I'll admit now that there is another precedent that, you know, I didn't think there was a split rail fence anywhere in a buffer in Niskiuna, but there it is, the Harmon Grove, you know? But what, what was the issue at Harmon Grove, Pat?
Well, there were a handful of lots that look good on paper until you have to put a split rail fence in within five feet of a, of a foundation, and your buyers don't have a backyard anymore. So.
Yeah, that's definitely going to happen.
On a case-by-case basis, but if you can get ahead of it, certainly, we don't run into any issues where expectations at time of sale don't add up to, you know, what's actually, has to be built.
I mean, I'll, I'll put the split rail fence up on the private lot, you know, but I was kind of saying it's, and the Department of Redundancy Department, Department to put a split rail fence up in the wetlands area, or the green space that's getting dedicated to the Town of Niskiuna. That doesn't make sense to me there. I mean, it's Niskiuna's buffer. If Niskiuna violates their own buffer, I don't know, that's. I think, Laura, didn't we have agreement that we didn't have to put the split rail fence up for the green space?
Is that on the western side of Kelts Farm? I'm just trying to follow along here.
Any, any of the green space, Pat?
Okay.
I thought this was, I thought this was just regulated to the rear, the rear of the properties, as it buffers the wetlands. That's what I recall.
That's what I'm agreeing to. In other words, on the private, on the private lot, if there's a buffer within the private lot that we put up the split rail fence along the buffer in the private lot. But we're not going to put up any split rail fence around the buffer of, in the green space.
Well, that's more of a town maintenance question. I mean, I guess, you know, whoever's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those lots will likely need some kind of a visual cue that there's a, there's a buffer that can't be, can't be touched.
I don't know, Pat, I would, that they were just going to grow wild, because like, if you look at the areas that, you know, the highway department mows, they only mow maybe a couple of, maybe like six feet wide, you know?
I think it might depend on how the stormwater management areas are enclosed, like, if we're fencing those in. You know, I don't think that we need fences around the wetlands in the forests of the towns deeded forever wild, open space, because that can't be developed. It won't, it wouldn't be touched. It's remaining forest. The only place that, that we might want to, you know, double-check fencing is how it relates to the stormwater management area. But, but, but you likely don't need a split rail fence just randomly going through the forest of our, of our, of our deed-restricted forever wild, forever wild zone. You wouldn't need split rail fence in there.
Why do we even need fence around the, the stormwater?
Well, so sometimes you do, and sometimes you don't. And I, you know, I don't know what the full, but you know, if it, if it holds more than two feet of water, I think the engineering department has said that that needs a fence, like, for public safety. If it holds more than, that's the threshold of New York for fencing water in, it's two feet. So like, if it's meant to be an infiltration basin and not hold amount, you know, like, if it's a detention pond, and it's actually wet, like, all year round, I think that's when they're fenced. And if it's like a depression and it will drain out, it may not need the fence. I don't know what they are. I haven't really fully studied them.
Laura, I think we've talked about that in other projects. I think it was New York State Building Code with the two-foot requirement. So, Joel, you know, once it's submitted, and we do the TDE review, you know, we'll take that into consideration as part of that review, you know, you know? And if there's any changes to the, you know, the fencing that have been submitted, and we can do that all as part of that package, you know, when we get back to you and reconcile any differences at that point in time.
Yeah, I just don't want to have this nice, natural green space and then start fencing it in. I mean, it just seems counterintuitive to, you know, dedicate a nice green space and then slap a bunch of fences on it, you know?
But when we do the review, we'll, we'll address it, Joel. I think, I think we tend to agree with you, so.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you're actually referring Joel to, like, maybe Lot 14, where the fence is actually only like five feet off the foundation, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the one I have a hard time with.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, we, I mean, and Patrick jumping here, like, I think he's saying get in front of it, because Amador had a couple like that, and they thought they'd be able to deal with it, but then it was really problematic. When we went out there and we said, listen, the planning board was very firm on this. The intent is to project these wetlands, but what they ended up doing was swapping area, so that it's still fencing in a decent amount of area, and you can get slightly closer in one area, but you're going to leave a bigger buffer in another area. So you may, like, want to look at the house footprint, or want to look at something you can do on those properties that would make it more buildable? Is that what you're saying, Patrick?
Exactly, yeah. You know, it, it helps to, I think, see it in person, maybe stake out the, the corners of the home, proposed building site, and, and try and visualize it.
Yeah, I think that, that's really hard to do now. But I, I would think it would be better to do on a building permit basis, you know, on a lot, each, each lot plan, you know?
Well, and that's what Amador did. And so, I mean, like, maybe you guys can put in your resolution the same condition you had for Amador, that you can do it building permit by building permit.
Yep. I was just going to say, Laura, you know, we have that same condition that we had for Amador to, to allow some infield adjustment with approval of the engineering and planning department.
That's cool.
So, so Laura, I'm just trying to track your comments. Lot, Lot 14 is, is pretty twisted up, right? Because the, the, the wetland buffer kind of does a, it crosses over?
Yeah, it's really close to the house on the plan. You can see how close it is on that one quarter. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is similar to some of the ones that Amador thought that they would be able to build, and then were really not excited about.
Yep. All right, Joel, what else you have, or David, or Mr. McPartlin, anything else? I mean, bottom line is, we're waiting for a town designated engineer, GPI, to get us some, you know, first cut of what they've received so far, along with the information that we still need, are you, Joel, for the SWIP and everything, right? At least get a first cut to see, you know, if there's any significant issues that are identified that may require any rework.
I'll talk to Nick tomorrow. I would like to try to get the approval to move forward by April 1st, you know, because my contractor is committed to, you know, if we start at April 1st, he could be done by the middle of July, so. That's kind of my schedule.
All right. I think you're controlling path right now, right, Joel?
Yeah, yeah, with the SWIP. But what, what about the TDE comments, Laura? I mean, have you talked to the TDE at all, or?
Yeah, he received them. He, he's reviewing them. It's GPI on this one. And I think, I mean, he may even be done, but I don't think he's planning on issuing them until they at least see the SWIP. He's going to do a rough view of the engineer plans that were submitted now, and then do an in-depth one when they have the full engineering.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Joel?
I know it's not on the schedule, but can I just mention Overlook Park one second?
Sure, I don't see why not. As long as we make sure, let's make sure we're all done with River Road, 2538 River Road. Is there anything else on that subject? All right, so it sounds like, Joel, you owe some stuff, and TD is working away, and we'll get the information, and then we'll, we'll try to support the date, but you're controlling path to get the SWIP in, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, what do you got? Go ahead.
With the overlook, I'm controlling, too, in terms of we have to respond to the engineering comment. And I finally got Rich Keller to, you know, research the sewer lines with me, Laura. So he's gonna, he's gonna have a guy meet me there tomorrow. Unfortunately, hopefully the snow is not too deep tonight. And we're going to pop, we're going to pop some sewer covers and get, get elevations on the, you know, inverse on the sewers. But it's a little tricky, because there's, there's a sanitary sewer and a storm sewer that dead end at the top of Shannon Boulevard that flowed towards Route 7. So the, the old house on the corner, I can gravity flow, you know, on that sewer and that stormwater there, okay? Then the other houses, there's a pumping station over on Dublin, and that actually pumps, like, about five foot in from the curb on my property, it pumps up to Route 7. So, you know, it can flow down to the, the waste treatment plant. So there is a gravity line that goes down, but no sewers until the bottom of the hill. But I think, well, I, I'm almost 100% positive that lets us tie in, if it's a gravity flow, into a main line. So those three lots would tie in gravity to the main line, all right? And then I would presume that their sump, their sumps would just go into the culvert. They wouldn't, they wouldn't flow into the stormwater. Well, because the stormwater line goes down and dumped, dumped into that little creek on the town property anyway, so the water will end up in the same place. So that's kind of how I'm going to answer the, the TDE comments, right?
Yeah, I mean, get your data and submit the response, and we'll, you know, get, you know, town engineering involved also, and see how it works.
Okay. That's it.
We'll all be in answer, of course. All right. Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Hey, Joel, we'll, we'll be in touch, and thank you for joining in tonight.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, that's it for discussion items tonight. So we're going to move right to reports. And first up is 1747 Union Street. It's a rezada market. Apparently, they're called the planning office, looking to put some propane tanks. In fact, they might actually already have them there. Maybe they're just changing vendors. So I know I talked to Clark a little bit of Laura, beginning of the meeting, and Laura's going to pull up a picture. Bottom line is, I, you know, again, unless Laura or Clark disagrees, they just need to submit an application for site plan, so that we can make sure it's in an appropriate location, and that any of the safety requirements are met, such as ballards, so on and so forth, like we did for CVS. And I think that's, you know, so Clark, Clark or Laura will have to reach out to them, and that's the CVS one there, right, Laura?
Yeah, this is CVS. And we kind of work with them on how those ballards work. I think this is the one that Clark took. This right, right here is where they're talking about, right?
Yes, it took a little, it took a little time to determine what their real request was, but they're changing propane supplier for that little cage right there. So their, their intention is to have 20-pound tanks that you exchange in that white cage.
So we'll get a formal application from them, and we can take a look and see if there's, if that's the correct location, or whether there's something more suitable as part of our site plan review, I guess, right? And, you know, whether or not they need ballards from an engineering standpoint.
Right. Having gone through this with Hatchet Hardware, we know the NFPA specification, so it should be pretty straightforward.
I can't, I can't remember. Have we done that with other, with like the stewards and the CVS? Having something to kind of help block someone from kind of driving into it?
We've definitely done it for CVS and for Ace Hardware. I think occasionally these things pop up. I think occasionally these things pop up without building permit or site plan review. And I think that may be the case that happened here because as Clark, I think noted, is to them, it's just a vendor change, which typically if it was just a vendor change, it wouldn't need planning board. But if we can't find any notice of it on a previous site plan, it doesn't appear to be installed correctly, it probably popped out, popped up. It just popped up. And I think that there may be some, because I think, well, you maybe talked about this before, like Stewarts may have them at both Stewarts locations in Niskiuna, and I don't think the planning board's ever formally reviewed them.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if now that we've begun to request it for other, you know, places that we, you know, is there sort of a consistency we can begin to establish?
Yeah, and we've kind of handled it as, um, at on a, as you submit something to us and you're making changes, we're going to make sure that the whole property is whole. Um, but you know, we can reach out to the building inspectors and have them try and take a look and if, and bring some of these other ones into compliance if we need to.
Okay. So more to follow. Uh, anything else on 1747 Union Street this time?
I just, I mean, I kind of give them credit for reaching out to us because all they were doing here is changing the propane supplier. So I appreciate them running it past us. So I think we'll, we'll end up in a good space.
Thanks, Clark. How about COVID-19 update? Anything, Laura?
Yeah, I want to echo Clark. They're, those owners have been great to work with. They're the ones that changed the colors of their pump, I think. And they went through us to change the colors of their pump too. Um, COVID-19 updates, town hall is closed until March 15th. Um, and so we would definitely still be continuing to have virtual meetings, but um, I think we, and I think you guys, you know, all know because we're going to be interacting with the public can expectation of having in-person meetings, um, in the near future. We're trying to just get all the vaccinations up and going and running and then get the meetings back to be in person for sure. Until March 15th, everything is in person. And my guess is the way that we had kind of laid it out last year, last, yeah, last year, was the town board would do the in-person meetings a couple of times to make sure that all was working. And then the planning board would start and the zoning board would start. And then we'd probably work into the committees. Um, so, um, town, but town hall probably open on March 15th. And I think from March 15th on, we'll start working on what it's going to take to, to have those in-person meetings again.
Yeah. Thanks, Laura. And it's, I think it's been a year now, right? Since we've met in person? We're darned close. Within a couple of weeks, one way, I think.
Yeah, it's going to be really close. I think by March 15th, it'll be a year.
Talking earlier, at least we didn't have to drive out in the snow tonight and, so worked out pretty well tonight.
I'm, I'm not sure we ever canceled a planning board meeting for snow, have we?
Okay. Any questions for Laura on COVID-19 at all? All right. So just move, move forward. Have an easy night tonight. Uh, COVID, uh, commission business. Mr. Oster, you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Diarpino?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Thanks, David. And Mr. McPartland?
Nothing for me.
All right. Uh, Mr. Khan?
Nothing here, sir. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Scraby Tennis?
Nothing here. Thank you.
Mr. Laflamme?
No, sir. Thanks.
Ms. Gold?
Nothing here.
And Ms. Shenfield?
Nothing for me.
And I have nothing except for we're going to have a nice quick night tonight and make it easy on the, um, Ms. Fodey doing the minutes for this one, huh? Okay. So nothing further on commission business. Uh, I guess, uh, nothing else. Any other questions for Laura or ask for a motion adjourned?
Motion?
Yeah, a motion to adjourn by Mr. Khan. And a second by Mr. Oster. Thank you. All those, a favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one oppose, we'll adjourn the February 22nd, 2021 meeting at 7:36 PM. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Stay safe and healthy. Bye-bye.